Let's go ahead and call the November twenty-third, twenty-twenty meeting to order. Ask, pick, roll.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
DeVorak?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchat?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I would take a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Well, call please.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Before we get started with Supervisor Brownell, as we noted last week, we lost Dan Lane, who was council member for sixteen years on the Pope, on the Pope City Council. And I'd like to just take a quick moment of silence to recognize Dan. Thank you for that. That was sixteen seconds for every year that Dan served on the Pope City, City Council. Moving on to Polk County Supervisor Bob Brownell, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Jason, members of the council. Thanks so much for letting me present tonight. I will, I know you've got an agenda there to think about, so we'll go right to it. I thought I talked to you today a little bit about COVID, what we're seeing in Polk County. It's kind of a good, bad, and the ugly story. We'll start in reverse. And Jenny's got the first slide up. Thank you, Jenny. This is Polk County's caseload, number of cases, positive cases since March. So this is here today. And you can see the surge in there easily enough. There, there was the orange line. And we've got some big numbers stuck in there. Eight hundred and three is our worst day, and yesterday was three hundred and sixty-nine, which is still not good. The average since November first has been four hundred and sixty-four positive cases per day. So anything under four sixty-four is, brings the average down, right? But it's still a pretty bad number. However, there is some light at the end of the tunnel. Now, the gray line there that you're seeing, this kind of flat test deaths. And we're in around, right around three twenty-two right at the moment. That only goes up maybe two or three every couple, three days. And I don't mean to say only because it's somebody's grandma or grandpa, or somebody's son or daughter. So I don't mean to diminish it, but the line is pretty flat in comparison, which is a good thing. You notice in the first part of the pandemic, it was rather rapidly, but now we've got new therapeutics and new ways to take care of folks once they're in the hospital, even if they're not in the hospital. So our results are a little bit better in that respect. Okay, Jenny, can we go to the next one?
Maybe. There we go.
There we go. This is also Iowa as a total. And this is the number of hospitalizations per day. And you can see the surge there, the early surge in, this is from March also. You can see the early surge there in, in the spring, and then jumped up here and after September, and went pretty high, got up to fifteen hundred and twenty-seven hospital beds nationwide, which is extremely high, well, well, well above anything we've ever experienced before. But you notice that it's come back down, and this is in the past five, seven days. Governor Reynolds has her protocol, new protocols out. We think that's having an effect. Obviously, something is, and that's the only explanation for it. But I direct your attention to the orange line, which is the number of cases referred to the hospital every day. You can see that that's dipped considerably. That's a good thing. I told you this is good and bad, the ugly. These are, these are bad numbers, but they're good in disrespect, that they're getting better. So the number of cases being referred to the hospital every day are significantly down, and that's positive, because that means that days, the number of people in the hospital will should decline also along with it, maybe a couple of days in the future. So we're hoping for a better number than thirteen thirty-three today, which is significant improvement over the fifteen twenty-seven we had here just a few days ago. And hopefully that gets better yet tomorrow. So let's go to the next one, Jenny. Now, this is hospitalizations in our region. You can see that the lines are kind of the same. Our region is south-central Iowa. Polk County obviously is the biggest county in that region, clearly the biggest county in the state, period. So the, by far, the biggest county in this region, but it also includes Dallas County, Jasper County, Story County, I believe, and some others. And, but goes south into some fairly lightly populated counties. So, but this one also kind of follows the same trend as, as the last slide you looked at with the state. And this one's down to three twenty-two in the, three twenty-two or three thirty-two, three twenty-two in, in hospitals. You figure about a hundred and seventy of that is Polk County by itself. We were running two hundred there for a while. I don't have the Polk County numbers, the metro hospitals right now. But a hundred and ninety is sustainable for us. Anything above that is not sustainable, particularly when we've got staff that is getting sick and having to stay home and quarantine. So we're getting to the point where the numbers again are bad, but they're not as bad as they were, and they're coming down, going the right direction. Again, the orange line that you see there is significantly down, and I think twenty-six was the number of people sent to the hospital yesterday in, in the region, which is a good number for us, and hopefully it'll go lower. So let's go to the next one, Jenny. This is Iowa and Polk County fourteen-day positivity rate. What this is, is we measure positivity rate, number of positives against the, against the number of tests taken. We take it over fourteen days. We have a rolling average of fourteen days. What that does is it kind of smoothes out the peaks and valleys. And you can see that, again, we're going the right direction. Our goal, however, is five percent, well above that. But we were running in the state, state's the blue line, Polk County's the orange line. The state was running twenty-three point two. They're down to twenty point seven, which may not seem like a lot, but it is. That's a good number, a better number, let's put it that way. And the county is always a little bit better than the state, and we continue to be that way. We are a little bit better than Dallas County, not a lot. They're nineteen percent even, I believe, and Jasper County maybe is at nineteen point five. So the counties around us, some are doing better. I think Story County's at fourteen and a half right now. The only county in our region that's below fifteen at the moment. But the five percent is our goal, and we're not close to that. However, it's not unattainable, because there are times in the past where we've been five point seven, five point eight percent, in fact, probably less than thirty days ago. Forty days ago, we were at five point seven percent. So the surge has really bumped these numbers up enormously. And these numbers are going to be hard to move as we go, well, for a while anyway, because we've got some big numbers stuck in there, like the eight hundred number you saw in their first slide, six hundred number, seven hundred number. But they're stuck in there right now. If we get past fourteen days, and they'll come out, come out, we should see some good improvements. Okay, is there a next one there, Jenny?
I skipped number three.
Oh, now I'm all confused.
I'm sorry.
Just kidding. No, this is daily positivity rate. This would be the daily rate that we get every day, number of tests taken, taken by the number of positives on a daily basis. And you can see, I think, yeah, I'm a positive, you can see that from getting back about ten, twelve days ago, it was fifty-one and fifty percent. That means over half the people that were tested on that day came out positive for Polk COVID. It's a ridiculous number. Now, as you're seeing, it's declined significantly. And this is definitely taking in Kim Reynolds' protocols that she's put in. And my hope was, and she appealed to our better angels to, for people to do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do, not because you have to, because you want to. And I thought, I think most people are going to respond to that. I really do. I don't think we, we've looked at mask mandates, we've looked at things like that. We just think this is a better way to go right now. And our relationships with our suburban partners is very important to us, including Polk City. So there's been some, a lot of different opinions about mask mandates, but right now, if we can keep results like this, I don't know why we'd have to go to a mask mandate, because this is, what Kim did was, was pretty much do a mask mandate without calling it that. So this is, this is a good improvement. Still not a great number, thirty-three percent, still pretty high, but it's a lot better than fifty-one percent, which was just a few days ago. So hopefully that number keep going. I think we have one more left, don't we?
Nope, that was all five.
Was it? Okay. All right. So that's, that's that. Like I said, it was good, bad, and the ugly. And the ugly being Polk County's caseload right now is really high. Seems to be kind of going the right direction, though. And then the other, the other numbers are not great, but they're going the right direction. So, so far, so good. You're the first ones that have seen this. So we took them today. We have a weekly meeting at eight o'clock in the morning on Tuesday mornings. Jason participates in that kind of time. And our epidemiologist kind of goes over the numbers. I'll be interested to see what she has to say tomorrow about this, because her prediction was, as of last week, before the protocols went into effect, we're pretty ugly. And now that we've had some mitigation measures taken, could be better. It should be better. Hopefully it'll be better. So I just urge everybody to continue to mask up and, you know, do the things we, we've been doing all along. Keep doing that, and I think we'll get there. You know, what's frustrating about this is the vaccine is literally weeks away. We think, according to Unity Point and Mercy One, that we'll be inoculating medical personnel before the end of the year at some point. So that's really what, what drives a lot of this is the hospitalization. That's why I want to show you is hospitalization numbers, because it's so important that we keep our hospitals operating. It's not just COVID patients, that's part of it, but it's also heart attacks, strokes, people having babies, broken arms, knee replacements, all the stuff that people have to have done and want to have done, get crowded out by COVID if we don't look at these hospitals under control. So right now, we're going in the right direction, and hopefully we can keep it up. So that's all I have on COVID. I thought I'd, and then I'll have some time for some questions here in a second. I thought I'd kind of talk about the budget a little bit. There's been a lot of talk in the media about, you know, these municipal budgets and county budgets being under stress and everything, and there may be some of that. I just want to let you know that the county went into the pandemic in very good financial shape, very strong reserves. We're coming out of it with very strong reserves. We wanted to do a tax levy decrease last year. My colleagues settled on fifteen cents reduction in the levy. I wanted forty-two cents. I thought I probably could have got the twenty-six or twenty-seven cents by the end of the day. But then COVID came, and we felt like we needed firepower to take care of a lot of folks and do a lot of things. What we did do, like quarantining homeless people and, and being at the homeless shelters and working with, you know, people on evictions and keeping in their homes and, and having a quarantine place. Fairgrounds cost money, and so we, we needed the firepower, and I think we did a good job with it, and the counties responded well. We're the only, only county in the whole nation for a while to have a quarantine building set up directly for homeless people who needed to quarantine. Now, fortunately for us, I think the other measures we took worked, because we didn't have a lot of, a lot of patients in there. We had four hundred beds available. And I think the top, top number we ever had in there was twenty-five, which is good. That's a good problem to have. So that, that building has been abandoned. It was the fairgrounds, four H building at the fairgrounds. That's been abandoned. And now we take our homeless folks that are COVID positive and put them in a hotel that we've got, that we're using, who has an outdoor entry to the rooms, and that seems to be working pretty well, because the numbers just aren't that great, which is pretty rare. A lot of places across the country have had, you know, COVID outbreaks among homeless, and that's not good, because they tend to wander around a lot and interact with other people. And that was our concern, is that we, you know, have an outbreak within the shelter, and then that expands beyond the shelter and so forth. And that really hasn't happened. So, so, so far, so good. As far as the budget goes, though, we'll look at, and I want to look at again at a levy decrease. It may seem counterintuitive, but I think the worst thing we can do right now is take money out of people's pockets and, and harm our economic recovery, which is going pretty well here in Iowa. But we do have some challenges. We've got hotels, obviously been impacted, like all hotels, probably the one in, in Polk City as well. And so we've got some challenges there, because we guarantee the bonds on that. And Iowa Vent Center has been kind of down for a while. We share profits with our management company, Spectra, at the Wells Fargo Arena, so we're not susceptible to any losses at Wells Fargo Arena, but we are susceptible to losses at Hyatt Hall and Community Choice Credit Union Hall. So there will be losses there, obviously, because conventions and conferences have been called back and postponed. But I do think we're going to come out of this in pretty good shape. The hotel occupancy across the metro right now is running about forty percent, which is not great, but it's a lot better than people expected. So that's a good thing. And I think as time goes on here, I know a lot of the pundits in the media like to say that we're on Zoom forever. I don't think that's true. For me, as soon as they can cancel these Zoom meetings like this, I will be happy to cancel them and be there, be in places in person, because you lose so much when you're personal contact, familiarity, and collaboration you get through in-person contacts with people. So, so I think that business travel will resume at some point, maybe not to the extent that it was, but to some larger extent, and that'll help our hotel industry. And then another hotel, you know, the general visitation we have here in Des Moines should return to some semblance of normal here shortly. So I think we'll be okay on the, on the hotel piece of our, of our budget. Rest of the budget seems pretty good. We're, we're proceeding forward on a lot of things we're doing. There's a lot of things going on. The eviction mitigation program we've got, you might have heard of, is working well. We're bought out of money there, and we're waiting to see what happens at the national level, because the moratorium on evictions comes to an end on January first. So we're very anxious to see what happens there, because we've managed to keep a lot of people. So far, we've managed to keep six hundred people from becoming homeless by finding a way to pay property management companies and landlords for some back rent by at the same time getting them some money, which they deserve, because they made an investment in their buildings too. So we want it to be a win-win and also keeping families from becoming homeless. And so, so far, so good with that. And we've plugged eight hundred thousand into that program. That is about gone. We spent over seven hundred so far since, since Labor Day, so it's not been like overnight or anything, but since Labor Day, spent about seven hundred plus thousand. And there'll probably be demand for more going into this thing because of the surge. We, our hope was that we could, our people that needed help could be back to work now in some of the industries that they're in, but it's not happening because of the surge. So, you know, first quarter probably is more realistic for that sort of thing. So anyway, that's basically all I have, Jason. Unless there's anything from any question or comment or anything from anybody, I'd be happy to try to field it.
Well, I just want to congratulate you for staying our representative. Oh, and you got reelected.
Yeah, Polk City did well by me, I think. Much appreciated. And for those of you that voted for me, I appreciate it. For those of you that didn't, I love you anyway, and move ahead and try to make the metro a better place.
In all seriousness, thanks for everything you're doing, and thanks for coming. I know you were trying to get here last week to it last minute's notice, and the, good thing you waited two weeks, because the numbers are better this week than they would have been two weeks ago, so.
If you don't feel well, you can stay home, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good job. No, but thank you for making that presentation. I, I actually, as much as I have come to not like some of what she provides, Dr. Schaefer and Helen Eddy, those presentations I do find interesting, and so I appreciate the opportunity to sit in on those when we can. So, but no, thanks for everything you're doing. I do appreciate the relationship that we have with Polk County and being involved when we can.
Keep doing the great work.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I do have a quick question on the, back to the church you were showing. Seems like every time there's speculation around the cause for the spike in the last thirty days, it's pretty politically driven. Is, is there a consensus? I think I might know the answer to this, but I want to ask it anyway. Is there a consensus from the Polk County as to, to some of the reasons why the last thirty days have been what they have been?
It's a great question, Rob. You know, and every community has the same answer. Nobody really knows why, if they're honest with themselves, really why these, these numbers have exploded like they have. Is it school? Well, school's been back in, been back in session since North Polk since September. They haven't seen an explosion like this. So it's not just, I think this is a number of things. Schools could be part of it. It's not the whole reason, though. Is it rallies, political rallies? I don't think that'll do it. It's just not that, I mean, it's a lot of people for a rally, but it's just not that many people in the whole scheme of things. So I think it was people kind of let their guards down, because our numbers were pretty good. Like I said, sixty days ago or less, we were five point seven percent, which is hardly anything. I mean, the flu is, is kind of the same kind of percentage as, as that. So I think people let their guards down a bit, and, you know, and didn't mask up like they maybe were in the spring. What we want to avoid at all costs, and I think both Democrats and Republicans agree with this, at least on the Board of Supervisors, we want to avoid at all costs is some kind of lockdown again. That's, that, that was, going into that last spring, looking back on it, probably was not a great decision. We didn't know any better at the time. We didn't know where to get into. So you've got to give us some grace for that, I think. But at the same time, it's been very damaging economically, and a lot of people went out of business, a lot of folks lost their jobs. We don't want to see that happen again. So, so I really respect Governor Reynolds for what she's trying to do here and keeping businesses open and trying to appeal to people to do the right thing.
Thank you for that.
I had a better answer for you, Rob, but I didn't, really, we're not sure.
I commend you for being willing to say what I think everybody knows is that, that we don't know the answer, rather than speculate or demonize a particular activity that you're inclined to dislike for another reason. That's, that is what it is, but I appreciate your response very much.
Thanks.
If nobody has anything else, you're free to leave.
All right, get back to work.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Go Polk City presentation with Al Lorenz, and now the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, council members, Mayor Morrison, and the other folks we have joining us. Bridget advised me to keep this brief, so I do what Bridget tells me to do, and I will keep it brief, and then field any questions you have at the end. Obviously, we appreciate the relationship that we have with, with the city, with staff, with the council, with everyone that, that works to make Polk City a great place. And even with the, the challenges that twenty-twenty laid in front of us, those relationships continued to bear fruit and working through some of the challenging things on our end, like the canceling of the festival. I just appreciate the professionalism and the thoughtfulness that the council, that the city leadership, that everybody involved gave. And it was a, a lot for me to digest, first time out of the, out of the barrel, and, and we're dealing with this and trying to get ready for the festival. So again, just acknowledge that, how much we appreciate the relationship with the city. And I know I speak for Bridget and just saying, you guys have been fantastic, and we truly appreciate that support. Just some highlights from this year. There were some highlights, regardless of all the challenges. We were able to partner with Big Green Umbrella Media to rebrand the PCC EDC, the alphabet soup, as we lovingly refer to it, into Go Polk City, and just be able to start to brand ourselves in that way. And that also included, and Bridget deserves tremendous credit for her work with Big Green Umbrella on merging the four websites that we had representing various activities and entities into one. We consolidated our social, consolidated our social media presence so that we could be more effective with how we're communicating. And then with, again, with Big Green Umbrella, reformatting the, the square newsletter to make it a more effective tool and, and one that wasn't quite so labor-intensive for Bridget and, and the rest of us. Obviously, we continue to work hard to attract new members on the chamber side. We've been able to continue to partner with them and work with them and look for creative and innovative solutions to give folks a chance to, to get their feet under them and get things started there in Polk City. And we've obviously been, been blessed and been pleased to participate in some of the ribbon cuttings and, and some of the new construction that we've seen in the community. We continue to provide resources for new businesses that are considering Polk City as a potential destination, and just talking through site selection and what, what spaces we have for lease, what ground we have available, and then obviously getting folks connected to the right people in our community that can answer questions, can provide advice or direction. That certainly is a, excuse me, a big focus of what we do. We continue to persevere as it related to the farmer's market. We got somewhere near a half season in on the farmer's market on, on our monthly luncheons. And then obviously, as we talked about, the ribbon cuttings and, and the groundbreaking ceremonies that we do on an ongoing basis. I think we did, Bridget in particular, I should be careful about saying we, but Bridget did an outstanding job of continuing to gather the information from Catch Des Moines and from the partnership, and make sure that our constituents were aware of, of things that were available to assist them, how, whether it be grants, whether it be funding, or whether it just be dealing with some of the emotional and, and other fallout of what we were all wrestling with this year. So that's certainly making sure that that connection is made from Catch Des Moines, from the partnership, all the way down to Main Street is an important part of what we do. We look forward, going forward, to continue, obviously, our work in collaboration with, with all facets of the city, in particular with Jason, the Parks and Rec folks. And we're excited to begin to partner with them and, and continue to build on that foundation that we have and, and focusing on the economic and community support that we'll have going forward. So that is all exciting. And as I mentioned in the preliminary, regardless of the challenges, a lot of highlights, a lot of progress was made in terms of our communication policies, in terms of how we disseminate information within the community and making our brand more effective. We would continue to ask for the same level of support that we've had in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, so that we can continue the activities that we've been engaged in and, and enhance what we're doing to try to improve and, and contribute to the quality of life there in Polk City. What questions do you have?
I just wanted to say thank you for coming this evening. I think something that we've talked about as a group is getting together with Go Polk City and working on some marketing strategies. So if it's okay with you, in the next few months, the council would like to schedule a work session with you and Bridget to participate in, so that we could talk about maybe some of-
We would love that.
Okay. I'd love to get that scheduled in the near future. I know we're getting into the busy season, and obviously, the meeting will probably take place virtually, but, you know, that's something that we haven't been able to do since you've been with Go Polk City. So I, I'd just like to let you know, we're, we're talking and thinking about that, and thank you for coming tonight.
Enjoy the opportunity to just work more closely with everyone.
Yeah, I would echo that as well. I, I think that, you know, your timing is, is really good. We had, I don't know if they gave you a heads up, we had our, our goal-setting discussion last week, and I think it's good, the more that we can hear, particularly even, you know, criticism, whatever you want to call it, of, I know some of the things that we have done haven't always been in the best interest of commercial development or the businesses. And so, you know, and we do have that responsibility first to the citizens, you know, whatever type, right? But trying to, to bridge some of those. So, and where I'm going with this is, is I think there's an education piece, both from the city as well as, as you and Bridget on, on what some of the impacts are, and maybe kind of changing even some of the narratives around what we might have commercially, what we might fit best for commercially, and, and kind of push us to, to make sure that we're, we're really having an honest, open conversation with the decisions that we make on that. So I'd really love your, like I said, good, bad, or, or, you know, sideways feedback on some of the things that we've done, some of the things that we could be doing a little bit differently.
Yep. Absolutely. We, again, we, you guys hear a lot of it. Obviously, your constituents communicate with you and Bridget in particular, and I, and I hear, so yeah, I just think any way that we can communicate, any way that we can take steps to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And, and part of that, as I've shared with Chelsea, I know there's a lot of planning that's forthcoming, and, and just, again, making sure we, we all are singing from the same hymnal and, and we're all part of the same plan. I think that's a huge, huge positive.
Yeah, also, Rob, and also, you know, it's been a tough time to just come on out, you know. This, this year hasn't given me a lot of opportunity to get in front of the council. It's been more than a year, I guess, but just appreciate the collaboration and, and look forward to the collaboration as we move forward and have the work session like Chelsea said, which would be great, to do some brainstorming and whatnot. So appreciate the support there and look forward to what we can do together.
Well, and just so it doesn't go unsaid from my perspective, I, I do really appreciate, if it wasn't for Jason Tran, you might have the worst timing in the city, Al, but a little bit with, unfortunately, in that regard. But do, you know, like you said, singing Bridget's praises, I think everybody that's had any interaction with her knows that. I, I know from meeting with you too, if, if the opportunity were presented to you in a normal year, it'd be, it'd be a lot of the same. So just know that, that, do appreciate in, in less than ideal circumstances what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Just real quick along those, real, real quick, yeah, real quick along those lines with Bridget. I know the one thing that she's really focused on, and I know you guys collectively have, but is keeping the businesses that we have, right? I know it's been tough to attract new business, but the most important thing I think we've done, I know she's been creative, you guys have been creative, and, and really staying engaged with all of our local businesses on a very weekly basis, you know, to make sure everybody's doing okay and trying to find those opportunities. So, you know, I know what- So, you know, I know it hasn't been a tough, I know it's been a tough year to get new business, but I think it's been a really good thing that we've been able to keep everybody to minus one or two. So it's, all things considered, I really appreciate that.
Amen.
Okay, great job. Thanks, Al.
Thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item, public comments, time and place for comments for any item of those in a public hearing. Jenny, did we have any comments tonight?
No, sir.
Moving on, consent agenda, take a motion please.
So moved.
Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Start chat.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
DeMora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries, moving into new business items. Item A, Resolution 2020-136, approving pay up number five, final retainage release for the East Graham Street and Deerhaven Street intersection repairs project, amount of $4,266.59. There's, don't know if there's a report on this, if there's not, to take a motion.
I don't have anything to add.
Perfect.
Second.
Roll call please.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
DeMora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, award Regional Park Master Plan contract to Confluence for an amount not to exceed $35,000.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll discuss this just really quick. First, I'd like to thank those five individuals that made up the selection committee with me. Spending almost five hours with me on a Monday afternoon is probably not how you envisioned your time, but thank you much, it was appreciated. And thank you to those four firms that submitted proposals, all very good proposals. Obviously, a lot of time and energy went into those, so we do appreciate everybody's time on that. Yeah, in the end, we identified Confluence as who we would like to move forward with for the master plan portion. They did score the highest collectively as a group. And we just thought that the vision of this project very much aligned with what we had as a committee. So yeah, just a quick report again, thanks to everybody involved.
And as, just to piggyback on that, I really, as I've gotten older, I realize how much less anxiety I feel on these decisions when there is a good option regardless of which way you go through. And so I would echo Jason's comments, the firms that we talked to, it really didn't feel like there was a bad option. And going with Confluence, obviously, feel pretty really good about. And I just want to thank Jason for his leadership in organizing and structuring both the proposals and the interviews and just really excited to get going and kind of, I think now, I've said Regional Park enough times that I'm not going to use the other term, so I'm going to say that's never going to be a mistake. But I just, I think we're in a good spot with this and looking forward to seeing what they have. So I don't want to stand in the tide of any other conversation, but I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract.
I will second and say, well, well said, Rob. We, it was a long time, but it was a great outcome and great job, Jason. Second.
This is Amy. Tonight on your agenda, it's just the wording of the, the master plan to Confluence. The contract itself will be on the next agenda for approval, as I understand it, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Excited, I jumped the gun, I apologize.
Just wanted to make sure I didn't misunderstand something, so.
Yes, it was a test. That's why I said it would be a pass.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. I'd just like to say, in the past, I might not have, I might not have been so excited about this, but with the people we have in place now, I know we're just not going through an exercise here that we have the people in place that will make, keep this moving forward and something will become of it. And I'm excited about that. So thank you, everyone.
Roll call please.
DeMora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Same.
Motion carries, next item, first reading of ordinance 2020-1900, amending the subdivision ordinance. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved. Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call please.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
DeMora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Here is next item, first reading of ordinance 2020-2000, adding a grading ordinance. Motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call please.
DeMora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, first reading of ordinance 2020-2100, adding a stormwater utility fee. Comments to this?
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did we put a dollar figure on that? Yeah?
We have, so I can go over this really quickly, but the ordinance calls out for a monthly $3 charge for residential property and then equivalent residential unit for commercial and industrial property. This would go into effect March, so the first bill people would see this increase on would be April 1st.
And I'm hoping that we will spend, spend time educating people as to what this money's for and where it'll go and how it will be used and those sorts of things.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, Ron, you're singing my tune there. I think this is the right thing to do and the timing is what gets me a little bit. Although proceeding with this, again, it is standard practice across the metro. It will help us make some, I think, programs that folks are very interested in. I know especially over here, but I think across the town. But again, I think we have to acknowledge that we're working from a deficit here when it comes to these utility fees and expect some backlash, I guess, that comes with this. It's getting to a standard, you know, practice in terms of how we bill things, but it does miss $3. So, but it's another increase. And I just think that we need to double our efforts on educate, how this, this is different. I mean, this piece is more of a, you know, not a pass through cost like a lot of the other things are, but something that will help us do the composting that I think folks are interested, that will help us eliminate some problems that have come up here recently. I think it's also important that the ERU piece is there and things that can be done, you know, with developments that have caused huge problems very recently can help to be avoided with this. So all that's to say, it's, you know, it's another, it's another increase, which I don't think makes anybody feel good, but is a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I agree and timing again, but the two things we just passed before this, I hope will help eliminate this in the future. And we are trying to do something as a council to keep these problems from being created. And I guess the only question I have was, will any of this money be used? Or do we know how it can help cure or those problems that already exist? Different developments.
I think that will be up to the discretion of the council, Ron. You guys can certainly have that conversation when we implement a program. Like, I know you're talking about some probably pretty specific subdivisions or projects that you're thinking of. But yeah, I mean, the money could be used for anything stormwater related.
Yeah, well, and that's exactly what I'm thinking of because there's several of our new subdivisions that have been around within the last, I'm going to say 10 years, that have considerable erosion behind houses and something that we hear about all the time. I think that that's, should be a big part of what this ordinance is about and what this money's for, to help prevent those problems in the future and to help solve the ones that are already there.
Yeah, 100% with you, Ron. I mean, I think this is a pot of money that we can use to be a good steward of problems that are best solved collectively than individually. So, you know, and again, literally every other community charges us a fee of this amount and in a lot of cases, quite a bit higher. So it's just, it's tough with all the other increases. And I think that this could, you know, I think we hope if the, specifically to the irrigation increase last year, if it looks like it had the impact that it did, and we can maybe even ratchet that back a little bit on top of something like this with the composting, you know, programs that are out there that would alleviate a lot of the need to water as extensively as some people think that they need to helps. And then some of the other, you know, programs that either eliminate future problems or help kind of fix ones that are in, already in people's backyards, like you said.
If there's nothing else, I'd take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Yes.
DeMora.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Start chat.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, discuss Neighborhood Citizens Group, Chelsea.
Thank you. I would like to initiate a conversation this evening with the council openly related to the Neighborhood Citizens Group. So as you all know, the group currently meets quarterly and we educate the group on various city topics and ask them to then deliver the information to their various Facebook pages. The part that I want to focus on amongst the discussion is that educating the group for minimal amounts of time and then expecting them to relay the message for the city is, it's not fair to them and I don't think that it's working. So I'd like to hear the council's thoughts on the topic and I'll leave room for open discussion. But I think that we have a really good group of people on our Neighborhood Citizens Group. And my hope is that this is a pipeline for future people to fill various opportunities on our boards and commissions. So one thing that I will bring up before I open it up for discussion amongst the council is, I know that there are a lot of communities throughout the state that offer something such as a citizens academy that is more focused on teaching a group of individuals about the various city departments and operations over the course of a year or a period of months. I thought that this might be an opportunity for moving to something like that that we can involve our citizens in, that they could participate in without the social media aspect of the committee. I think this would help educating our residents on city operations and just keep our operations as transparent as possible. So I will open it up to the council for discussion and conversation on this topic, but I just kind of wanted to lead off with a couple of points.
So I'll speak first because I know I'm currently the liaison to the Neighborhood Citizens Group. And Chelsea did solicit some feedback from the group and it seems like they are all very interested in seeing the group continue and serving as a way to, you know, share that information. But as Chelsea mentioned, you know, they get snippets of our information where we may have, you know, when you think of also too, all the things we've done, the comprehensive plan, the CIP, the last however many years of financials, all these things that do go into our decision making. You know, I agree that they just, they get a little tiny snapshot of what's gone into our decision making and everything like that. So I do think introducing an educational component would be a great idea, whatever that looks like. But I think, you know, some of those foundational pieces and also a greater familiarity with some of our departments and their inner workings. One of the things though, I do think they really do like is the exchange of information. And I think there would be a fear of losing some of that. I think Facebook gets pretty tricky and some of that. So I think I would be supportive of maybe either putting some restrictions or a little more distant or, you know, something around that. But another thought I had was, you know, we just got talking about, you know, the stormwater utility fee and we need to make sure we communicate that. And I know that's been a theme that we've talked over and over again of effective communication. And I know at times, you know, despite our efforts, sometimes people out there maybe think we don't communicate as well as we should. So I wondered if perhaps we should have a work session, and I know we've got budget and some other things coming up, but to focus on, you know, not only what the Neighborhood Citizens Group should be, but also just strategic communication in general. You know, are there more ways we can put little snippets of information, you know, for somebody to read the CIP? That's a lot of material, but, you know, useful information like that. But also when there are things that, you know, because we don't want to provide, we don't need to, I don't think, provide, you know, full digest of every work session and conversation we have. But, you know, some of that path to transparency and effective communication. And maybe we could leverage the Neighborhood Citizens Group to help come up with ideas. So maybe we could have a meeting with the Neighborhood Citizens Group, you know, solicit some ideas and feedback from them as far as, you know, what they see would be beneficial to our citizens directly from council and ways to help, you know, again, continue to educate them. And then maybe as a council, we could revisit that. So that's kind of a long-winded thought process there. But since we do have a group of engaged individuals that I think do care about how we communicate and, you know, potentially pass information through them to our citizens, that seemed like maybe something to consider. So that was just my two cents.
As well said, Mandy, I think I would agree that we need to put a little thought into it. And I think the key is informing and the disinformation has been the biggest probably concern, I guess, is that we need to inform those folks better so that the correct information is brought forward and not just assumptions or some different things. So we don't, you know, that we allow it to be a constructive type of a platform and not something that will trigger unnecessary thoughts or feelings or those types of things. They're, you know, just not necessarily needed. So I think the more we can inform and then put some potential rules around, you know, not stringent rules, we're not here to tell people what to do, but just some guidelines, right? Some things that we, maybe it's going to training like we talked about. But I think some frambers would be good and I think it would also probably be appreciated by those groups as well because maybe they're not sure either what the expectations are. And, you know, we don't either, but we have to probably establish that for them to have that open, honest and thorough communication moving forward.
Yeah, I guess, so I'll go next and acknowledge my bias upfront. I mean, I don't know, three years ago or whenever- I mean, I don't know, three years ago or whenever it was started, it was pushed by me and, you know, I think very transparently in the, you know, this kind of lark here would try something that, you know, to my knowledge, other communities weren't doing. And for the most part, I think been, you know, anything that you do to try to communicate is ultimately, you know, good. That's our responsibility, right? So, you know, it's been, actually, I should start with what we're discussing here is how we interact with that group. The groups that exists, whether it's in a, you know, a Facebook forum or the Nextdoor app. You know, the city has no control over, you know, the, you know, not that anybody's suggesting this, but to dispel those types of things, those are, those exist. And, you know, I think that was always one of the side benefits. When we started this, it was another mechanism for people to communicate. But it was also a way for, you know, new residents to be able to, you know, learn who their neighbors were. And I think that's been something, at least that I've been positive to see, you know, has it always been, you know, done the best way, whatever, that obviously not. But it's, you know, people are imperfect. And I do see the value in us trying to, people aren't going to always receive, you know, news, particularly if it's tough news or it's negative news, you know, from a cost perspective. But everything that we can do is really, you know, a part of our responsibility. And so I do appreciate Chelsea's critical thinking approach to this. And I think that one of the first conversations we had about it early on last year was, you know, me saying a lot of the same things to her on, you know, make sure that this is worthwhile and all that stuff. But I've appreciated getting to know the people that have been involved with those groups. And I really, really like the academy approach that you mentioned. I don't like the term academy. I think academy connotates more stringent, thorough, you know, commitment than what this would be. So evolving this to what we, you know, I think within the first six months, when we hit a groove with the neighborhood citizens group, it was having those proposals from the PD, from the fire department, from public works coming, obviously, you know, Jason's newer. But, you know, it was having them share the department insight, which I think an academy type program would really provide to a larger amount of people. So I think this, you know, talking about these types of things on an ongoing basis are good. You know, obviously, you know, I was probably the most, well, I should be careful how I say this, but I expressed the most frustration, you know, over the past couple of months with some of the things that came out of those groups and still hold a lot of those feelings. But I think there are changes that can be made that really don't compromise the original intent of the group, which was to, you know, to really, you know, foster neighborhood cohesion. And, you know, whether that, I guess, use the example of a new person, but it's really for every, you know, I know in our neighborhood, you know, lost dogs and some of those things that, you know, are really concerning to someone, individual person. And it's tough to, you know, put flyers out and this is an immediate way. So I always get a warm fuzzy when something that, again, I don't want to make it sound like it was by design. It was, but it was certainly a manifestation of that group coming together and hearing some of that information. So I know I'm rambling. I think that the evolution to an academy model where it gives those department heads the opportunity to kind of share what their departments do. And then quite honestly, to, you know, think of the council as a department as well. And kind of just anything that we can do to communicate is better. So I'm certainly open to an evolution here with this group. And I know a lot of good people have served and don't want to gloss over that. There have obviously been instances here and there, but I really appreciate getting to know the people that I have group and most of what's happened as an out shot of it.
Well, I don't have any answers. I just think that we need to figure out what they expect and what we expect from them, which maybe it's just me, but I'm not sure what those two things are.
Yeah, I would echo what Ron said there. And I think the other comments being made are valid. I think the change from maybe a citizens group that's meeting on a regular basis to more of an academy learning experience with the city and that can be, give people the opportunity to rotate through both citizens as well as staff throughout the years so that we can maybe make this a better well-oiled machine so that there's good, consistent information going out to the citizens. And, you know, once they leave the citizens group or the academy or whatever it's going to be, you know, hopefully they take the information that we provide them and put it into a positive light on what the city is doing and not runs through the mud. I think that's something that we should not tolerate if we're going to give people the opportunity to, you know, to be in front of us and we're going to volunteer time, both council and staff on something like this. Then there, it's a two-way street, you know? We're going to do good to you because we're going to educate you and we're going to provide you information that you can share with your neighbors. But, you know, please, please look at us in a positive, positive way because we're trying and we're trying to make this community as best as we can.
At that point, Jeff, I would say, I'm going to echo that and just say, come to us with questions, right? In the interim, come to the council, email, call, whatever the case may be. But that's why we're here is to help educate. And if there's questions, that's from any of the citizens groups, that neighborhood groups that are out there now, any questions, call us now until we can kind of figure out the best way to communicate that moving forward. We communicate information that is out there because we got a lot happening.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think by and large, the, you know, when you get the Facebook pages and those, they serve a good purpose. Like Rob said, there's, you know, where's my kid, where's my dog, what's going on? I think, I think that's good information to have. And I think, you know, we're in an age where social media is here, it's going to stay, it's not going anywhere. It's how we use it. And, you know, let's applaud those that are doing well, you know, recognize those citizens that are really helping us out. And, you know, stay on the positive side.
Yeah. Just to clarify one thing that kind of listening to everybody too, you know, this was always an addition and it was never meant, and I don't think anybody said this, but just to, so it's said, you know, never meant to replace communication. I think, like I said earlier, it is our responsibility to do that and to do this as an addition, you know? And we don't have wards, right? So whether you live in a neighborhood, we are representatives of everybody, you know, whether we're two doors down or, I don't know, logistically how far we can get away, three miles away, maybe? That's probably too far, I don't know. But the point is, right, whether proximity is, there is no border other than, you know, you're in city limits, you're not. So, you know, it's been something that I think has, you know, positives and negatives. And some of that is just inherent, to your point, Jeff, that's, you know, social media is what it is. And there's a certain amount of backlash that, but we're going to, that comes with the job here. And the things that we can do to help, you know, tell the good story when we have a good story to tell. And, you know, even when it's tougher news, it's all part of the deal. So what, like I said, I appreciate Chelsea's critical eye on this discussion. And my ramblings probably gave no concrete direction whatsoever at all, as usual. But I do appreciate the discussion nonetheless.
So I'm not sure where we go from here. And I didn't mention to the council that at our last neighborhood citizens group, the group asked to put some rules and parameters around social media activity. And I've, I volunteered to assist with that, but I'm a little hesitant to do so, not knowing what the future of the group is. And also we put rules and procedures around this committee and it becomes a more permanent thing that we can't adjust to our needs. So I wanted you all to talk about it. And since we are talking about it at a meeting, I just wanted a little bit of direction and guidelines from all of you, which I think you've kind of given. But I am not sure how to move forward. I think several of you said some conflicting things, but what I'm hearing is you'd like to maybe see what the academy would look like. And I would be happy to do some additional research on that.
So I'll speak up because I know the Facebook thing and Chelsea, I know exactly what you're talking about, how, and some of it was even my thoughts is, you know, sometimes Facebook can get away from people and, you know, we have volunteers that are trying to relay information and sometimes they're getting hammered with, you know, conversation, things like that. And they're being viewed as an extension of the city. So maybe for the Facebook page, you know, maybe for now, we hold off on putting rules, things like that around it. And encouraging those that do have neighborhood Facebook pages to mention that, you know, it's sharing of information, you know, make it clear that it is not a city page, you know, it's a neighborhood, but it is not a city page. And making sure too, that, and I think some of them do a pretty good job of just directing them to the city when there are questions or when things get a little bit, you know, a lot of the questions or things that people have concerns with. So like I said, number one, maybe just holding off on the rules and making it clear that they are not city managed websites. I personally would like to engage the neighborhood citizens group, people that are currently involved, you know, just for suggestions they might have on effective communication, things that they would like to see, you know, as citizens and representatives of their neighborhood that can help us do a better job when we have things like, you know, increases and things like that. And I do agree with the academy approach. Chelsea, I would love to see what you come up with and help in any way I can. And I don't know too if that's anything we would want to engage them or not quite yet. But those are kind of my three pieces.
I agree with that, Mandy. I think that's a good approach.
I agree too, but I don't know, I guess I'm not familiar with all the Facebook stuff. I do get on Facebook once in a while, so, but I don't know how we could tell volunteers, you can't do this or you can't do that. I think it's more our job to help volunteers and get them headed in the right direction. And I guess since I'm not familiar with it, maybe, maybe I don't even know what I'm talking about.
Well, and some of the help volunteers, that's where some of the should we put parameters around it came from. Because this summer, there was quite a bit of activity on at least one of the neighborhood Facebook pages. And the person that was the administrator, who is a volunteer, was getting some pretty heated conversation coming at them. So, but again, there's just, Facebook is something that, no matter how well I think it's managed, sometimes there's a, you can't, like you said, control what people say, think or do. So I think there's definitely value in keeping the Facebook pages around. But yeah, I again, don't think we need to put a lot more rules around it and continue to encourage people to reach out directly if they do have significant concerns.
Yes, yeah, I just, I just want to know, I'd like to know what people think and what they expect. And maybe it's something we can't even provide, I don't know. I know I've had, I've had people call me out on Facebook and I just won't respond.
Yeah, and I mean, there is a component of the, it's like, you know, striving towards getting better, you're never going to get perfect. But, you know, whatever you can do to try and help things, that's how I see communication. So, and I would just echo a lot of what, what Mandy had said as well. So I don't know if that's too much more definitive for you to act on, Chelsea, but I think it was a good, probably a discussion we should have had, you know, you know, a year, you know, annually or, you know, every other couple of years on the group is kind of just not when things come up, but, you know, more proactive maintenance too, so.
Okay, I will work on putting some things together and getting a meeting scheduled and we will go from there. Thank you.
Perfect. Next item, reports and particulars. I didn't want to do this at the start of the meeting because I wanted to do it so that it was to record. But you guys will all just give me a second. I'd like to just read a little something about Dan Lane and who he was. And I just think that it's worth it after a person who spent 16 years on the council. So Dan Lane passed away peacefully with his family at his side at age 62 on Sunday, November 15th. Dan was born in Eau Claire, Wisconsin on January 3rd, 1958, to Victor and Helen Lane. In 1968, the family moved to a dairy farm in Fall Creek, Wisconsin. In October of 1976, Dan met the love of his life and best friend, Patsy Warner. Dan and Patsy were married on May 3rd, 1980. To this union were born two children, Melissa Ann Lane and Jacob Daniel Lane. He was hired by the state of Iowa in 1988. Dan ran for city council for the city of Polk City in 2002 and he was a council member for 16 years. Dan and Pat, Patsy were blessed to take many trips to their Mexican home away from home. Dan and Patsy recently purchased a travel trailer. I think we'll all agree with this. To say Dan was a Green Bay Packer fan is to put it mildly. He was still a son of Wisconsin and loved all sporting teams from the state. He supported the American Legion Polk City Post 232. Had quick wit, great smile, could tell a story or a joke with the best of them. He cared for family deeply and felt his world and felt for this world on such a deep level. Dan was preceded in death by his parents, his father-in-law, his sister, his sister-in-law, his goddaughter, nieces and many beloved friends. Those left to carry on Dan's memory are his beloved wife, Patsy Lane, children, Melissa Lane, Jacob Lane, his mother-in-law, his brother, his sisters, his brothers-in-law, 16 nieces and nephews, many great nieces and nephews and many, many close friends, cousins and extended family. There will be a celebration of life planned for the family later this spring. So I just thought that it was well deserved to Dan. It was definitely a shock to hear that last week after he passed and talked to a number of people in the last week who shared similar. So anyway, that's really what I have to echo on to Bob's comments, which I do appreciate because I do, as you know, have been following those very closely. And unfortunately, for whatever the reason is, as Polk County continues to trend down, Polk City right now is trending down too, but we've been running to about 2-2% to 3% higher on the 14-day average, pretty much consistently across the board. And so while Polk County continues to, or while Polk County today was around 18%, Polk City was just over 20. So we continue to be just slightly higher. You know, it does seem for what, for what it's worth, when you go out and around town and you stop at some places, it does seem like it's definitely not, not consistent across the board with some recent actions that were taken. So there was a recent meeting that took place with the metro mayors as well as Polk County Board of Supervisors. Letter went off to the governor, which I did sign. And so hopefully that will encourage her to continue to move towards further mandates of some sort. Anyway, as we move closer to the holiday, obviously, we are all concerned about seeing these numbers go back up. And so again, it's just those casual and friendly reminders to wash your hands. Please social distance, particularly over this holiday. And for goodness sakes, please wear a mask when you're out and about in public. That's all I have. I'll pass on to somebody else.
Aside from Ron, I'm the second most tenured person here and sat next to Dan many, many years. And I
And, uh, I, right now, if we were in person, Dan would have a Santa hat on, at least probably the next meeting, um, after Thanksgiving. But he was a, he was a guy, he never had to ask what his opinion was. Um, he didn't care about the group thought, he cared about the citizens and, you know, really, he just never had to wonder where Dan stood. He's a great man and man of few words, but when he talked, it certainly, he, uh, he said what he thought and had no qualms about it whatsoever. He'll, he'll, he'll be dearly missed and I, my deepest sympathies and, and thoughts and prayers go to him, his family as they move forward. He will certainly be missed in the community and his service does not go unnoticed.
Well put, Dave, and, and I agree with all those things. And, uh, he was, he was definitely a good council person, he cared about the city. And, uh, what he really cared about was the citizens of Polk City. Of course, I knew Dan long before either one of us were on the council and, and, uh, got to know him. And he was, he was just, he was a great guy. He just was very proud of his family and what they did and was, was, uh, eager to share those stories with you and wanted to know about your family.
Yeah, so I, I didn't have the time that, that Ron and Dave did, um, with Dan in three or four years. I need a better job of keeping track of this, but, um, like you said, you, you can't, you sit next to a person for a year and, and it's every other week and, but, you know, things come through and, and you just, you learn about people a little bit more. I think, you know, uh, Dan and I saw a, a lot of things differently, but there were a couple of things that, that stood out to me about him. He was, he was always prepared for meetings, like, uh, that you could try and trip him up if you wanted to. And I, I tried to a couple of times just to, because, um, but he, he knew the packet inside now, uh, coming. And I probably did to pass city clerks frustrations at times, but, um, if something was off, he would, he, there's probably been a slew of typos since he, uh, hasn't been around that I've gotten through that would not have otherwise. But, uh, it, it, the other thing is that, that he liked to, if people were coming, uh, and, and wanting to do something to the city or wanting to ask for money, he made sure they brought it and, and he, he wanted to make sure that, um, folks didn't get one over on us. And, and I appreciate that mentality as well. So, um, my, uh, my thoughts to his family and, um, certainly, uh, disheartening to hear and shocking to hear, but, uh, appreciated, uh, getting to know him a little bit that I did and, and very much appreciated his, uh, like you said, Ron, passion for, passion for the town and, and service for, for all those years, so, thanks.
Yeah, I, I learned a few things from Dan, you know, while I was on council with him for a, a brief tenure. And, uh, one of those was, you know, you can have a fiery argument during council, but when the gavel fell at the end of the night, you were still friends. And I think that's vitally important to have a, a council that way, you know? Take it out during though, that, that public, that public time, that when, when you're done, you shake hands, you talk about the, the football game that they're good, he's going to go watch and, and, you know, get a good chuckle. And then to, to Rob's point, um, be as prepared as you can possibly be come Monday night. Read that packet thoroughly, ask the questions ahead of time, you know? Talk to the city manager, talk to the city clerk, talk to whoever you need to talk to, to get clarification so that when you're ready for that Monday night to start, you, you're on it. And, and he was, and yeah, he, he probably drove some people nuts every once in a while, saying that the period was in the wrong place. And, you know, there was a misspelling here or there, but we all got our chuckle out of it and he, he enjoyed it. He enjoy razzing people that way and, you know, he, he made us better for it. So, um, I very much appreciate him, uh, and just like everyone else, my, uh, my sympathies go out to his family, so.
I wasn't on council at the end, but I was the library, I was on the library board where he was a ladies on for many years. And, um, again, just thankful for Dan's years of service to Polk City. And, you know, I, what Jason read tonight, I had also read before too. And it just, while his loss is very sad, it brought a smile to my face thinking of Dan and the memories that he left here. And, you know, again, his love for the Packers, just those things about Dan that, um, if you Dan, knew Dan, you know, again, you just had some, some memories that came to mind while reading that. So thanks to Dan's family for, for sharing that with the world there one more time for Dan. Again, he, he's greatly missed here in Polk City and, and had a lot of years of good service here. Uh, one other thing moving on, I do want to just, um, thank the school board. You know, they are in such a tough position right now, making really hard decisions. And I just thank each and every one of those school board members who's putting their time in, uh, to make the best decisions for our kids in our community. It's, it's got to be tough and I don't think that their role is going to get any easier anytime soon. So I did just want to take a minute to, to thank them. And I hope everyone out there is giving them graces, they're working through this and trying to do, um, the best they can with constantly changing information, wanting to, um, keep our kids as safe as possible, keep them learning. So thank you to the school board and administrators and all the teachers, everybody that's working to execute it as well.
That's a, that's a good point, thanks for saying that, Mandy. But, but I agree, they, the school district has, has done a phenomenal job. Appreciate their willingness to tackle the issues and what have they had? The four meetings in the past couple of weeks, trying to, uh, figure things out. So definitely, uh, kudos to, to their approach, whatever you think about, uh, the result. They've, they're prepared and, and certainly willing to meet and discuss, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing that up, all of you. I can't say enough good things about, uh, North Polk School Board Administration right now.
Anybody have anything else?
Hey Mayor, this is Jason. I want to give a plug really quick to next Friday evening's, uh, Light Up Polk City event. So this is kind of an evolution of the square lighting. You know, we thought, what better year than 2020 and COVID to try something new when you're forced to? So, you know, we're going to do the, the tree lighting on the square. And sorry, this is kind of something that Al talked about earlier with my involvement with Go Polk City. I got to say, I've really enjoyed working with he and Bridget thus far. But no, so, you know, we are, a lot of people are putting their hands in here to make something special in an otherwise tumultuous time. So, uh, K and M Productions is going to livestream the lighting and the parade for us. So that'll allow people to stay at home safely, watch it on their computer. Um, you know, it's not this, it's not the same, but in 2020, it might be the best that we can do. A big shout out to Bridget, she has talked with the businesses around town to, you know, put some float entries into our parade, so we actually have a parade. No, I, I think it's honestly, um, lemonade out of a lemon kind of situation to bring the lights around town, let people watch safely from their house, you know, the parade will be socially distanced. You know, and on the, the city side, you know, I'd like to thank, uh, the PD, Fire Department, Public Works for your guys' help with, uh, you know, Chief Zipker leading the way, flashing the cherries and, you know, the, the fire engine bringing Santa and Mrs. Claus through town. So, um, yeah, thank you everybody for, um, being involved in that. Hopefully it brings a smile around town this holiday season. Other than that though, um, have a happy and safe Thanksgiving, everybody.
Excellent. Anybody, staff-wise, anybody have anything else?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, real quick, I was just going to give everyone an update on the body cameras.
Awesome.
We had those in and did the install and training last week and they are fully rolled out now on all chefs. So we got seven of them in. Initially, they had to put some equipment in the vehicles and in the PD and they got all our staff kind of a train, the trainer at the beginning on the operation of them, but they are fully implemented now and out on our vests. So if you see the little box in someone's uniform, that's what that is now.
Really glad to hear all that, thank you for that. Nice press release on that too, good job.
Thanks.
Anybody have anything else? If not, I need a motion to go into closed session under Code of Iwo, Chapter 21, uh, to evaluate professional competency of an individual. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Local? Yes. Tabora?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sir Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you need to stay, you've been told you need to. If not, have a nice night, have a good Thanksgiving.